Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April meeting. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Effective September 1st, 1991, Chapter 9 of the Laws of 1991 requires that we inform persons other than students who attend meetings within a school of the proper procedures to evacuate a building in an orderly and timely manner in the event of a fire emergency. If you must evacuate this room because of an emergency, please exit through the doors located on the north side of the gym, turn left, and proceed directly to the outside or you may use the door located in the northwest corner and proceed directly outside of the district office. Okay, at this time, the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on March 9th and March 16th, 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or corrections on this? Any of these?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Treasurer's Report. The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasurer's Report for the months of January and February 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's with great pleasure that I'm going to turn over the mic. I mean, I usually like to give the mic to Dr. Cammy, but there's some, we have some special things going on this evening, so without further ado, I'm going to give her the mic.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Wow, that was lackluster. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you, much better. So, last night, we had a dinner at Hofstra University for our students who participated in Shadow Day at Hofstra. And I was asked to speak, and I talked a little bit, formal learning and informal learning. And so tonight, I think we get to, once again, celebrate both of those. Our boys and girls basketball teams were phenomenal this year, even though they're on their phones now. That's the mother in me, sorry.
So, hen, hen, close it up. That's the mother in me.
So, you know, when you're on a team, and you do well as a team, you can feel your teammates next to you. You don't necessarily even have to make eye contact, you just know they're there. There's kind of a synchrony that just works. And you can tell by watching our boys and girls basketball teams, when they're on the court, that that exists for them. There is this flow that goes on that really can't be expressed in words. But what's really beautiful, I think, about our teams is not just the sense of family that's created with their dads, because honestly, our coaches are personally some of the nicest people I've ever met, but they care about your kids almost more than anyone I know. And all you have to do is watch them on the court and watch their interactions with our kids when they're interacting with them. It's just really a beautiful thing to watch. The formal learning that goes on are the skills about basketball. It's about how you pass to one another. It's the plays that you create, it's all of that. But the informal learning is as important as the formal learning. It's the way they talk to one another, it's the way they treat one another, it's the way they take care of one another. It is really a life lesson, and I think something that will carry through forever. So, I want to first thank our coaches, because they are just phenomenal human beings who care about your kids more than you probably even know right now. And I want to thank our basketball teams for caring about each other and for representing Baldwin the way you do. One of the things I hear from our opposing teams is, they use the word sportsman, you know, what good sportsmanship they have, but I really think it goes deeper than that. Sportsmanship, to me, sounds like something, it's kind of like an act that you put on, but really, it's more than that for our kids. It really is a deep understanding and a deep caring about each other. I believe that these guys and these girls will be friends forever because of that caring that they have. They show it on the court, but they show it off the court also. And that has everything to do with who they are as people, who their coaches have taught them to be, and who their families have taught them to be. So tonight, we celebrate two things. We celebrate our boys and girls teams and their coaches for the phenomenal job that they did with each other and representing Baldwin. And we are also going to celebrate Mr. Ramirez's birthday tonight. So, happy birthday, Mr. Ramirez. So, congratulations. Karen, did you want to add?
So, many of you guys, I was debating whether to wear my tee shirt and have my pom-pom sitting on the table, because I think most of the people in the audience know me as in that regard. But I decided to put on a shirt and a little jacket and kind of come a little presentable. One, I just want to quickly...
I thought you made me do the same thing.
Well, you have the Seussical hat, but Ross, you're gonna have to give it back to her, because I expect her to wear it. I just want to share a real quick story. So, a friend of mine went into the hospital to have a baby, and we're sitting in the triage room with the nurse, and so we're talking about Baldwin School. Her son is private, in eighth grade in a private school, and she's like, "Well, what should I do, Kay Reed? What do I need to do? Put him in Baldwin?" And so this nurse says, "What do you want to know about Baldwin? I'll tell you." And we both looked at her, and we're like, "Well, what do you know?" She's like, "Oh, my kids, both of my kids went there. One, my son graduated in 2010, my daughter plays on the basketball team." And it was so cool to be kind of, we were like in Manhasset, it's Katz Center is in Manhasset, I believe. And it was just really cool to kind of meet this Baldwinite in the most unlikely place and so, and be kind of joined together with basketball. So, you guys will know who it is later, but I just want to congratulate both teams. You guys are phenomenal. You represent Baldwin like nobody else represents Baldwin. And I want to say that the girls champions and the boys Long Island champions, the district is so very proud of you. And the teams that were also, we're giving certificates, the certificates are coming from Nassau County Legislature Laura Curran and Kivon Abrahams, and Town of Hempstead Councilwoman Erin King Sweeney, as well as our Assemblyman Corrin, who is being represented by Mike Graham. The two people from, one from Councilwoman's office would like to speak to you guys, so would you like to come up? Ms. Peculisi?
(applause)
Mm-hmm. Hi, well, first of all, I myself am a Baldwinite, and I am so proud of all of you, and I'm so proud to be here on behalf of Supervisor Anthony Santino, Councilwoman Erin King Sweeney, whom I work for, Councilwoman Gooseby also wanted to be here tonight, and she was unavailable, and our new Councilman Anthony Di Esposito. So, I have been keeping everyone at Town Hall informed, they're getting tired of hearing about Baldwin, because I, every time you guys won and you were going in and you were advancing, I was right up there telling them. I had the heralds every week, and we were all so proud of you, and I just, I need you to know all of that. The boys going all the way up to the state finals was incredible. The girls, you know, Nassau County champs. You guys, you don't know how proud you have made all of us, okay? So, we just want to thank and congratulate you. And there's certificates in the back. (applause) Mike Graham. I'd like to introduce Mike Graham. He's here on behalf of Assemblyman Brian Corrin.
Thank you, I'll be brief. Just on behalf of the Assemblyman, who is running late from another event tonight, I want to send his congratulations to both teams on the success, and what a great job you guys all did to make this town proud. There's citations from the Assemblymen, and once again, congratulations and best of luck in the future. Thank you.
Laura? We have Nassau, our county legislator, Nassau County Legislature Laura Curran.
So, I really couldn't have said it any better than Debbie. You really have no idea how, as a Baldwinite, how proud this makes me as well. I'm boasting to people, showing people the pictures, telling, calling my neighbors and my friends from other towns. You really make Baldwin proud, and I think, you know, to use a word that Dr. Cammy used, you show a lot of grit, which I admire. So, well done.
At this time, I'm gonna call up Mr. Ramirez to say a few words.
(inaudible).
One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Ramirez. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Are you 10? Are you 20?
Well, I was just gonna say, I'm honored to do this tonight when I turn 25. It's exciting.
For what, 14 or 15 times?
No, they say 40s are the new 20s, so I'm gonna stick with that. Here we go. It's, I know we get spoiled, we come up here every year, it seems like this is it, but it really is an honor to work alongside not only these student athletes, but these coaches, and watch them accomplish what they've done the last, really, the last, over the last decade, when you look at what Baldwin basketball has done. It's amazing. And that doesn't happen, though, without the support of everyone here. So, I want to thank a lot of people. I'll take a brief minute, and then we're gonna make it about the kids, but I want to thank the Board of Education for their support in every which way, at games, you know, they're there, talking to the kids, talk to the coaches, Dr. Cammy, District Office Administration, Ms. Norris, the High School Administration, the parents, great group of parents supportive of the coaches and what we're doing, and they get the philosophy, they get the big picture. And I want to give a big thanks to, because a lot of things people don't see, but there's a lot of scheduling that goes into this, there's a lot of, you know, if school closes, transportation, getting a building to practice, you know, there are only so many gyms and so many teams that have to use it, and there's a lot of shuffling that goes around. And Russ Randazzo helps us out with that big time, and the coaches are able to call him directly, and he works with us hand in hand, so I want to give him a big thank you for that. I also want to thank the two young ladies in my office that do all the transportation, all the reservations, all the gate lists, everything that goes behind the scenes. They're not here tonight, but they're here with us in spirit, Patty Penner and Paula Sarasoli. And then, next, let me just talk a little bit, and I'm not gonna say coaches, I'm gonna say coaching staff, because we are fortunate to have two of the best coaching staffs in New York State. And when I say staffs, it starts at the middle school, the grassroots. These head coaches have gotten coaches to buy into their program, their philosophy, and share a vision. The middle school coaches, the JV coaches, the assistant coaches work hand in hand with them year-round. We get to see the end result of not a three-month season, but a 12-month progress, because a week after the championships are over, a week after that last win or that last loss, they're back in the gym getting ready for the next year. It's a long process, and they do that with the support of the coaches and the program. The head coaches, I mean, what can I say? We're very fortunate. Two of the classiest, hard-working, most dedicated, most passionate people you'll ever come across in athletics and education. So, I want to thank them for what they've done here, and will hopefully continue to do for a long time. No pressure. All right, so, let me talk about the athletes, because no matter how good those coaches are, if you don't have the athletes, it doesn't get done. Aside from what they do on the court, they're some of the best basketball players, best athletes that you see in Nassau County on Long Island, they've accomplished something that was never done before, and that's both boys and girls winning a county championship in Class AA, the biggest classification of basketball. They did it last year, and they did it again this year. So, they're trend-setting every year that they do this. They just get better and better, the program gets better and better, the colleges that come down to see these kids and call us, we have some major colleges, you know, we have athletes going, Lamis who's in the back is going to Brown University, Shane is getting calls every day from colleges, and I can go on down the line. So, it's opening doors, and they do that not only by their play, the type of young men and women that they are. If you see these young men and women off the court, they're just high-class, high-character quality people. And they pass that down to the JV, to the middle school kids. The middle school kids and the JV kids come up with big shoes to fill. Every season, I have a preseason meeting with all the athletes, and I give them the same challenge, and this group has stepped up the last three, four years. I tell them, "Your job is to leave an impact on your school, to leave an imprint when you leave here. People to talk about you two or three years down the line about what you've accomplished and what kind of person you are," and they've done that. They step up, and I'm very proud of them. So, congratulations to you. And now, we're gonna announce, starting with the girls' basketball team. So, when I call you, the coaches can join me up here. Coach, let me introduce the coaching staffs. I'm sorry. First, Mr. Tom Catapano, Varsity Head Coach. Mr. Anthony Bolden, Assistant Coach. And we can get into titles, me and Mr. Bolden have a discussion, you know, Mr. Catapano's laughing. Assistant by title, you know, does a lot of the grunt work. Mr. Catapano does the baby kissing and the shaking hands. Here we go. All right. I'm not sure if she's here yet, Jenna Anna Carrico. Jenna is playing in an All-Star game, when is that? Monday night, and one of the requirements is she has to do an hour of volunteer work at a hospital tonight, so she's doing that, she'll be here later. Lexi Aponte. When I call you, come on up. Just so you know, we're gonna call you up, you come up, we're gonna take a team picture, and I'm gonna give you all the certificates after, so you stand right by Coach over there, okay? Mariah Benavides. Kayla Brown. Ebony Duvert. Lamise Elgamal. Nadia Elcock. Megan George. Kaia Harrison. Sarah Henry. Asia is also doing her volunteer hour at the hospital. Asia Hudson. Nicolette Manzella. Lauren Millwood. Montia Moon. Montia had a softball game, just so you know, the varsity softball team scored seven runs with two outs, bottom of the seventh, to come back and win that game, so that's where she was. Jamila Moore. Sarah Pulis. Kenzie Wingate. Jada Watts. I'm not sure if he's here, but it'd be the only time he's missed something. Oh, okay, he didn't. Homecoming King, 2015, Chris Wilson. These are the managers, and they not only show up, they actually have duties that they do during the course of the year, practices and little things that they do to contribute. Chris is one of them. Bree Gee. Janay Knight. That is your 2016 Nassau County Champions, the Lady Bruins. Okay, so, you guys are gonna group up over there, we're gonna take a quick picture.
And if we can invite the legislators as well, if they're here.
It's supposed to be first to be in your picture.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to look right here, right here, thank you. All right. Right here. I'm gonna take two pictures, okay? Everybody, huh? There's nothing. Okay.
I think you were in it.
I don't think so.
Okay, and now, we're gonna introduce our 2016 Long Island Champions, state semifinalists, the varsity boys' basketball team, the Bruins. If I could have Coach Burton and Coach Henry come up? No towel. Okay, so, here we go. Coach is gonna help me with some names here. This is Jerian Baubobron. Sorry about that. Elijah Bavel. SAT class, okay. Justin Caldwell, who just committed to Malloy Division II. Congratulations, Justin. Darrell Rose Jr. Derek Ruffin Jr. Taj Thorpe. Norman Wilson. Managers now, right?
There's Kevin, there's two up here, DeAndre, that's a manager.
Okay. Okay. And Matt Truppa. Kevin Thompson, who is in SAT. Manager? Okay. And now, our managers, same as in the girls' program, they come into practice every day, the coaches, basically what it is, is a coaching, training system that they have. They train these young men and women how to get involved, run practices, different responsibilities, and a lot of times, these managers go on to colleges and do the same services at the colleges. As a matter of fact, we had a young man a couple of years ago who received money at the University of Massachusetts to do what he had learned to do here, and said it was a great experience, he actually got to drive the coach's car when they went away, so it worked out for him. Our managers this year, Allison Miller. Anthony Bruno. And last, but certainly not least, Haley Mello. That's your varsity boys' basketball team, and I'm just one last thing. I want to thank Coach Henry, because Coach Henry was offered a varsity head coaching position at his alma mater, and he turned it down because he liked the feeling of family and what was going on here in Baldwin, and chose to stay here. So, Coach, thank you. All right, guys, over to them.
(inaudible). Just trying to get to it, okay. That's making sure I'm right here, and take two. One more. Thank you.
Before you eat it, take a look, it's a very beautiful cake, there's refreshments in the back. Then, the, both teams are gonna meet me by the athletic office, and we'll hand your certificates. Thank you, everyone, that came here to support both these teams, appreciate it. Have a good night.
You know, I prefer the salty stuff. I'm not really a cake person. I mean, I do once in a while, but my two bags of chips are good for tonight. And this is sweet. No, I have a salad for dinner. I have a salad and a chip. Salad for dinner, oh. I have to help you in front of the kids, you know that?
That's what I do.
Yeah, because in the other boardroom, it was in the, the boardroom was on the side. I don't, I didn't realize this was the board meeting. No. No, it's a gym. Yeah, okay, that's right.
We're shadows. Not yet. Yes.
We hate to end the party, but we do need to get going with the business of the board. So I'm gonna ask all of our members to come back front. Okay, now I have to give the mic back to Dr. Kami, so, there you go. So tonight, we have a presentation about ELA in our school district, English Language Arts. And to present is Gail Reed, who is our supervisor of English. Christine Pellegrino, who is one of our teachers. Michelle Peterson, who is our director of literacy. Assessments, grants, and whatever else we give her. Yes. I know, because I invented it. And Sherri Fackler, who are here to present the kinds of things that we're doing in the English Language Arts curriculum for our kids kindergarten through grade 12. So, welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Kami and the Board of Education. Today, we're here to present about, in our articulation, for English Language Arts. The last presentation was done to the Board of Education in 2012, so we're here to update you about some things that are going on since then. We have a literacy committee that has met several times this year. The charge of that committee, which was given to me as I was hired as the director of literacy this school year, was to review the K-12 literacy needs of the district, see what the strengths and weaknesses are, see what directions we needed to go into. And over the course of our meetings, the committee first reviewed goals for the year. We've discussed professional development offerings, and also the best ways to meet the needs of the students. The committee is made up of teachers and administrators that represent K-12 across all of the buildings, and also across content areas, because we do have some of the supervisors on the committee representing social studies and science as well. And we also have a staff developer, a professional developer, Lauren Heffernan, who works with our teachers, and she sits on the committee to bring back feedback from the other professional developers that are working with our teachers, because a big goal of the committee was to make sure that we were sending a consistent message across all of the trainings that we were doing, and actually seeing how different professional developers can work together. And some of the things that have come out of that, we'll talk about in our presentation. So, as I said, the goal of the committee is to analyze data and inform instruction, to support the needs of all the students, and also look at... Sorry, I flipped too far in my notes. And we've also looked at ways to plan across the buildings and across content areas. During the course of... It's over-clicking, sorry. One of the things that we've done curriculum-wise is make sure that all of our curriculum, K-12, is aligned to the Common Core standards. We also have instituted the reading and writing workshop model at the elementary level. We've done a great deal of professional development for our classroom teachers, and we actually spoke about that at our K-12 presentation that we did a couple of months ago, about what was going on with the writing workshop. It's really lifted the level of the writing that the students have been doing, and again, we'll talk about that more in the presentation. For our students that are struggling, we have several programs that we use to support their needs, and make sure that they are able to improve their skills and improve their reading levels. We have Level Literacy Intervention, which is for children who are working below grade level, and they participate in both reading and writing activities to support them. We also use Wilson, and then another program called Just Words, and those are for students who are having trouble decode, with decoding. So they can't really sound out the words, which is impacting how well they're reading. So for the elementary level, we have Ms. Fackler and Ms. Pellegrino that are here. Ms. Fackler is going to talk with you about some of the things that are going on in the elementary school.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Kami and the Board. There's some amazing things going on across the district in Reading and Writing Workshop. Reading and Writing Workshop is being implemented K through 5 across the district. Each classroom has set aside blocks of time for Reading and Writing Workshop, where teachers implement units of study, along in collaboration with the ENL teacher, the reading teacher, as well. There's a mini lesson with active engagement, independent reading time, where there's time for conferencing with the students, a shared time to see what the students have learned, as well as guided reading, where the teacher and the reading teacher work collaboratively to work with each student on their instructional level, to get them to go further. There's some amazing things going on across the district, so I'm just going to share with you some of the amazing things that I've seen. Working alongside with staff developers, we have Constance Foland, Erica Pecoralli, Naomi Rosen, and we're bringing Reading and Writing Workshop across the content areas with science and social studies as well. Right now, in second grade, they're doing an amazing unit on ants. We've brought nonfiction into research. The classrooms have ant farms. It's amazing to see the children mesmerized by what these ants are doing. They are able to observe them. They're watching videos on them. Their guided reading is on different level text about ants. They have mentor texts, and they will be creating their own expert books based on what they're interested in. Somebody might be talking about the queen ant. Somebody might be talking about the life cycle of the ant. All different things that the children are interested in, and they're going to be creating their own expert books about ants. And if you just walk into any of the classrooms and observe the children and what they're doing, they're so excited and immersed in what they're doing, and their writing and their reading is amazing. Another thing that's going on in third grade is they're learning about countries around the world. That's one of their units in social studies. And they're collaborating with the art teacher, the music teacher, the science, Ms. Naomi Rosen, and they're learning about different countries. They've already talked about Japan, and along with Japan, in art, they've created kimonos. The classes are taking trips to the Hofstra Museum. There's a program there called Art Travelers Through Time, Literacy and History Through Art, and people from Hofstra have come into the classroom before the field trip, spoken to the students. The students are going, some of them are going next week to the Hofstra Museum, where they're going to be able to look at different authentic cultural artifacts. They'll be able to write about that. They'll be able to learn about that, and discuss that, and bring it back into the classroom with their reading and their writing workshop, where at the end of the unit, they'll be able to be their own expert and research their own country. Some of the classes are also going to be, at the end of the year, as a culminating activity, incorporating the arts with their social studies and their countries, and they're going to be performing an Anansi and the Moss-covered rock performance, an African play, to bring everything together at the end of the year. So, we'll let you know when that happens, if anybody's interested in coming to see it. So there's just, that's just a tidbit of some of the amazing things going on in the elementary classrooms. There's different things going on K through 5, but it's amazing to see the children's excitement and energy this year with Reading and Writing Workshop, and the growth and the progress of all the students. With that, I'm going to hand it over.
So Ms. Pellegrino is gonna talk to you about, in particular, a project that was done in one of the third grade classes with their expert topic writing.
Good evening, good evening, Dr. Kami, Board of Education members. I just want to talk a little bit about writing workshop, and I happen to be a writing workshop geek and a lover of letting writing workshop. So I'm really so excited and proud that this work is going on consistently throughout the district, which has produced some phenomenal results. I think that, you know, one of the big takeaways this year is the, as Ms. Fackler mentions, the high level of energy and engagement that we can see in our students. One of the other things that we've really worked hard is to bring a sense of connection, that these initiatives that we have employed this year are not done individually, that we really strive hard to see where...
that we really strive hard to see where they overlap and to bring those areas of connection to the students. So, we were undertaking two in particular, and you have examples, at Brookside School this year, with the support and the help of Constance Foland. She encouraged us to undertake a unit in pattern books, which kind of on the surface seemed a little simplistic, and we kind of weren't sure where it was going to go, wasn't really fleshed out. But the teachers and I dug in, and we really tried to find places where we could extend and deepen their understanding at the emergent and the beginning level of writing. And the product was just really out of this world. And Mrs. Picarello and I particularly had the honor of presenting this unit at the LILAC Conference at the encouragement of Ms. Peterson. She helped us and supported us as Dr. Seniak came to see us on that day, which we were so thankful for, because it's nice to have a friendly face when you're presenting. And that was a really great takeaway. In the third grade, we were working on the idea of "I can." And we really took this theme as students, thinking about what they were coming into third grade being really good at. And we took this theme and we took it across disciplines. And particularly in writing, my feeling was that they could take that and develop their idea of how to present that idea as a narrative, how to present it as a piece of informational text, and how to present that as a piece of persuasive writing. And through that project, we connected with Mr. Lees at the high school, and we brought our students over there to the center, which they were overwhelmed with excitement at seeing. And I brought for you a clip of what they produced that day, which was an amazingly rich activity for them. So, we're thankful that we had that opportunity. I'm going to leave the students to tell you what the unit was about. They're going to explain what they did and give you a little snippet of what that looked like in the production, the end-production phase.
So, the next couple of slides before we go on to the middle school, we just wanted to talk a little more about Writing Workshop in that there's really a progression that we're seeing in terms of the kids lifting the level of the writing that they're doing. So, on these next three slides, there's not a progression within the slide, but it's progressions across the slide. They're all the same text type, the students are writing informational text. Those pictures up there demonstrate kindergarten writing. It's how-to books that the students did. In fact, Ms. Picarello's class just finished those books last week. And so, it's different from the page that's in your book. But you'll notice that, from the screen, that the students have a material list, they have diagrams that are labeled, they have pictures with captions, they have tips and hints for the reader to notice as they're talking about their topic. And in this case, it's flying a kite. For third grade, this is the expert topic writing that the students were doing. So, again, it's the text type of informational text, but a different genre within that text type. And you'll notice, though, that some of the characteristics the students learned in kindergarten, they're lifting that level of what they can do and doing it differently as they grow up. So, they have a table of contents, which might be somewhat similar to the list of materials that they did in kindergarten. They have pictures that fit and support the text. They have diagrams, and they also have tips and ideas and hints for the readers to know. And for this one, the third grader was writing about track. For fifth grade, again, in informational text, the students are now writing about the solar system, because they had been studying that in their classes. And so, again, not only are they writing well within a genre, but they're also connecting across the curriculum. And again, you'll see, they have a table of contents. It's organized by chapters, as you also saw in the third grade text. They have diagrams that support the text in the story and give more information. And in this particular one, also has key words that the students need to know or the reader would need to know as reading it, and a glossary on the back to define those words. So, overall, as we're working with Writing Workshop, we noticed that the kids are loving writing, they're writing across pages, they're learning structures of the story. And even as we were taking the assessment last week, as I went around the buildings and spoke with some of the teachers and principals, they already have noticed some of the difference in their writing, even with the assessment, in terms of the level of writing that the students are doing. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It is a privilege to share the celebrations that our students and our teachers have been working so diligently on this year in our English grades 6 through 12. One of the things, is that it? Middle school, sorry. You're fine. We're going to start with the middle school. One of the things that we have done this year is we have implemented an entirely new curriculum, grade 6 through 12. The teachers worked very, very hard last year, as well as over the summer curriculum writing. What we have now is we have pacing calendars. The pacing calendars consist of four eight-week units. Two of the units are the Engage New York modules, and two of the units are the Teacher's Choice. They were units that they have been implementing, and they revamped them, and we aligned them to the Common Core, as well as our pacing calendar. I will stress that our pacing calendar, and we speak about this all the time, is a living document. And one of the things that the teachers are working very hard at is amending the pacing calendar according to what our students are doing. And so, that is a living document, and that's something that we are consistently revisiting. Some of the things that we have embedded in that curriculum is every single unit consists of a mid-unit and an end-unit assessment. Those are common assessments that the teachers administer, and it allows them to get together as grade-level teams and discuss the data that they have been receiving on the students, and really allows them to inform instruction. And it's a wonderful venue for them to talk best practice and to share best practice with each other. And that's one of the things that has been so unbelievable and that I've seen that has happened with our teachers. One of the things that I'm very proud of, the teachers, we got together last year, and we formed a summer reading committee. And we wanted to start to branch out into other subject areas. So, we formed the committee with teachers not only from the English department, but also from the social studies department. We involved the librarians as well. And it was a wonderful venue for us to really share our love for literature. What came out of that was a new summer reading list at the middle school. And what that consists of is, per grade level...